We're now live, Warden Danielson.
Good morning, everyone, and Happy New Year to everybody. If you could take a roll call, please, Mr. Rutter?
Warden Danielson.
I'm here.
Councillor Moffat.
Present.
Councillor Roberts.
Present.
Councillor Kennedy.
Present.
Councillor Burton.
Present.
Councillor Ryle.
Present.
Councillor Devolin.
Here.
And Councillor Shell.
Present.
Thank you.
Could I have a mover in a second or two to adopt the agenda, please? Councillor Devolin and Moffat, thank you.
Moved by Councillor Devolin, seconded by Councillor Moffat, be resolved that the January 12th, 2022, Halliburton County Committee, the whole agenda be approved.
All in favor? That's carried. Is there any notice of penury interest or general nature thereof today? Hearing none, we'll move into our delegations. We have Janine Mitchell, manager of human services from the city of Coortle Lakes, to give us an update on social services modernization. Good morning, Janine.
Good morning.
I will turn the floor over to you.
Great, I'm sharing a presentation, just giving, I was asked to come here today just to give you an update about where we are, what's been happening. So I wanted to make sure that I provided for you some background information to make sure we're all on the same page. And this is really from a service perspective, so how does this affect the people in our community that we provide services to? It was also to give you an idea of where we are with the with the new provincial vision and the modernization update. Next slide, please. Alright, so back in 2019, the province announced that they were going to do the employment services transformation and transition. And as you all know, we were identified as a service prototype community. So employment services were, we had previously been providing employment services to support those in receipt of Ontario Works and on, in some respect, those in receipt of ODSP to to gain employment, to become financially independent. The employment services aspect of that was removed from our responsibility effective January 1st, 2021. And Fleming College was selected as the service system manager for our community. As part of, as part of that, it did mean a big shift in terms of what we do and how we do it, and it meant a big shift for all the people we serve. And last, the year 2021 was more or less a transition year for us. We've now been doing this for a full year and it's been, it's been an interesting process to go along and to work through, but we're, we're hopefully doing, we're progressing along that way and we're hopefully doing better with that. As part of this, we also saw a reduction in funding, about $824,000 of provincial funding. So that, that meant that we had a difference in, we had, we had fewer staff available to provide the supports and services. And it also meant that we had reduced funding in order to support life stabilization activities. So we had to really do a lot of realignment, both of people and of the funding that we had available to support people. Next slide, please. So with the provincial modernization of social assistance, there have been several initiatives that have already been implemented. How I was looking at this entire approach to explain it to everyone was, here's the what, here's what the province is doing, here's now what, so now what's going on, and then here's the so what? What did all of this mean to us and how did we approach it all in order to maintain services and provide services? So with the province, they are really looking to realign and modernize social assistance. And the impact of the pandemic has really increased their the initiatives and increased the pace at which they're looking to do this. One way they did that was through this, they have a centralized intake and benefits unit. And what that means is every person who's applying for social assistance in the province of Ontario will now go through a centralized provincial intake and benefit unit. Previously, they would apply to us directly and we would provide that service and we would maintain, we were required to provide to ensure that a person who applied for assistance had a decision of eligibility made within four days. And as, as an organization, we were very successful in meeting that service performance expectation. The province took over centralized intake for a number of municipalities. Ours was, we were not, we were basically voluntold to participate in this as of February 16th. The expectation was the province would be doing 70% of our intakes and applications. And what happens is a person calls a, calls a 1-88 number. Even if they call our local office, they get connected to that provincial 1-88 number. They go into the call center where they're going to have, they're going to work with a person who will determine, who will determine their eligibility. They can also apply online and that application would be processed by the province. The province expected to do 70% of all applications and intakes. And part of the change in the employment services funding and the other changes were done so that the province would be taking over some of those financial responsibilities to make things easier for us to manage the life stabilization. However, with the centralized intake and benefits, the province is currently doing about 20% of our applications, which does mean it's a little bit more confusing for the, for the clients calling in to apply for assistance. The process has slowed down somewhat and there's been some confusion. So over the past, over the past year, we've really been working hard to try and work out all the kinks for that. I don't think the province had understood the full impact of what that would be to do the centralized intake and benefits in terms of the technology and the services provided and also the services that clients really want to receive and how they want to receive them. It was a bit of a transition for clients to be phoning the province directly and not receiving services from our staff because they know our staff, they know our office. They know where we're located and there, there was a lot more comfort with that. But as I said, we have been working on that over this period of time. So right now, we continue to do applications for about 80% of people who are applying for assistance. And when we do receive those applications from the province, there are still things that need to be addressed and things that need to be finished. The, the province had thought this would save quite a bit of administration time. We've discovered it saves us about 15 to 20 minutes of what would normally be an hour and a half to a two-hour application process. So it saves our staff some time. The one thing that has happened that has made a big difference is the ability to have our documents electronically available. The technology is now has the capacity for us to upload those documents and save those documents, which makes a big difference, especially during COVID because of working from home. Staff are able to access information from, that might be submitted from clients. Clients are able to submit information electronically and that reduces the admin time necessary to look for those documents or for the paper document. It saves costs on mailing those documents in. And it also reduces the space requirements for us to have all those documents available. It also makes those documents available, let's say a person's in receipt of Ontario Works, they're applying for Ontario Disability Support. It makes that process easier because the documents are available for the ministry staff to also access that information. Additionally, there is an application that's available called My Benefits. This is available to all the people we serve. So they do need to have either a phone or computer and access to an internet in order to access this service. It does give them the ability to have information right at hand about their, let's say their status of their application or if there is information that's required, if they want to submit information. There is some information that's required to be submitted on a monthly basis. This gives people the, the ability to go online and submit that information and enter it in. Of course, in our communities, it's, it's not an application that's well-used. Right now, 14% of people in city of Coortle Lakes and 20% of the people in county of Halliburton are actually using the My Benefits application. And that's of course because you need to have access to a computer, internet or a phone. And many of the people we serve just don't have that, the, the ability to do that. The newest thing right now is e-signatures. We're going to be able to have a number of forms signed electronically. So the clients will be able to remain where they are, sign the forms electronically. And that helps us in the processing of applications or issuing benefits or things like that. So that's going to be, make a big difference, especially, especially for the people in our community when we know travel and transportation is issue. So what we'll be able to do is focus the appointments to meet with people in person, in person when we do get to that point. We'll be able to focus that on to addressing more of the life stabilization needs as opposed to the administrative responsibilities. And that'll make a better use of the time, both for us and for the people that we serve. Next slide. So overall, the province had a new vision for social assistance. They really wanted it to start focusing on, on people and they wanted to have a wide range of supports and services that were, that would really respond to the unique needs and address barriers for the people we serve. They wanted it to, they wanted it to focus on employment and independence, but they knew that there were many people who had to have other barriers addressed before they'd ever be ready to move forward with that employment and independence. So the province looked at realigning roles and responsibilities. And they started that off with the employment services transformation so that the province is going to be taking over more of the responsibilities for financial administration. They removed the employment services responsibilities from municipalities, or they're in the process of doing that. And they moved those to the services to managers and Employment Ontario. And Employment Ontario had been providing employment-related services for people who were, for anyone in the community. But also, we did use them as a partner for those in receipt of Ontario Works. They have always been our, our partners for providing those services. But the realignment of roles with this new provision, with this new provincial vision goes beyond the employment services transformation. The province wants to take over financial responsibilities. But over the next three years, they intend to transfer the financial adminis, more of the financial administrative tasks associated with social assistance to provincial staff. And the municipalities would be responsible for more of the life stabilization, ongoing support activities. We'd still be able to be using our, using the programs, using the supports, the benefits to support the people we serve, but the benefits themselves, once we enter a payment into the system, it would actually be the province who would be processing those payments and issuing those benefits from a central place. Or actually, we don't quite know how that's going to work, if it's going to be a central place in the province or if it's going to be still processed in our local offices. Right now, the province does issue all payments and benefits for those in receipt of ODSP from, from a central place provincially, so local offices don't issue those benefits. And that is what the province is, is moving toward more of those centralized systems and the financial administration. The province did extend the timelines for this. Initially, it was expected that this would be, that this would be implemented by the end of 2023. The province is now looking at 2025. And I think that's because the province has, I think COVID's had an impact in that, on that. But also, the province has realized the complexity of doing something like this. So in the interim, we will continue to be providing, we'll be doing the financial administration in addition to the life stabilization roles and responsibilities. What that means is that our staff are, are working, they're using their time very wisely. They have to because there's, there's a lot to be, there's a lot to do during that time. And it's balancing priorities between supporting the life stabilization and ensuring you do the financial management support for, for the people we serve. The funding associated with the provincial vision, they're working on a revised funding formula. It's quite complicated, our funding formula is complicated right now. Just with our administrative, our administrative funding, a portion of it is 100% provincial, a portion of it is 50/50, is 50% provincial, 50%, 50% municipal. Then there's also a portion in our admin funding that is definitely directed to what you would think of with administration, staffing, accommodation, technology. Then within that same administration budget, there's a portion directed towards supporting client services. So actually, benefits are issued through our administrative funding. And then we have other administrative or other streams that we use to administer benefits as well. So the province is looking to revise the funding formula, have it make, streamline it a bit. But they have, they continue to indicate that the funding formula adjustments will not impact municipal cost share requirements, that those cost share requirements will not change with the new funding formula. That's what they've indicated and they have indicated it each time because as municipalities, we're all very good at speaking, at representing our communities and our municipalities and indicating and indicating the process and the funding formula and, and no increase in costs for municipalities. We're very good at representing that. We're also very good at representing the people we serve to ensure that all of these processes and services are going to mean, are going to mean that we can continue to provide the very best service we can to our residents because that's what's key with all this change. And it has been an interesting year with some of these changes and with the realignment. So we don't know what that funding formula is going to be. We do expect to know what it will be sometime in 2022. And we've also communicated with the province, the province is well aware of the municipal budget process and the unit, and the timing for the municipal budget process. So they're well aware of when they need to really have things determined and communicated and rolled out so that we have time and within our budget process. Next slide, please. And I should say, I might be talking a lot, I'm trying to condense all of this and all of this, and it's, there's so much information. So I apologize if it might feel a little bit out of place, there's just so much to share. So what we did, so the province was looking at realigning their provincial vision and their roles and responsibilities. We, as municipality, we had already been doing that within our own office. We always look at how we provide service, how can we do it better? How can we be more effective, more, more efficient in how we provide service, services? So we took this opportunity once again to take advantage of all of the, of all of the initiatives through social assistance modernization that might help us be more effective, more efficient. And we also took a look at, we also said, alright, let's, let's look again, where do we want to go? Where, what is our, what is the aim in what we do and how we do it and why we do it? So we looked at updating our service principles. We also looked at our own alignments of roles and responsibilities. And then we looked at, we looked at funding from a different, from a different perspective as well. So we wanted to, we wanted to, we wanted to, we had already aligned many of our services themselves, but we wanted to see if there was a better way to do what we were doing in order to use our funding better to support the people we serve. Next slide, please. So, so the first thing we did, where we, where do we want to go? We took a look and redefined our service principles. We knew that we wanted to be person-centered and strength-based case conferencing. We wanted the case, case planning and service coordination to be that strength-based as well. We wanted this both internally and externally. We also looked at the staff we have, client services workers, we redefined them more so as system navigators. We wanted them to focus on facilitating those connections to the services and service provision. And we wanted to make sure that it was coordinated with the individual, so it's done with the person through a collaborative approach, guiding and supporting them to reach their goals and objectives. We wanted to make sure that supports and benefits will be aligned with evidence-informed, strength-based and person-centered approaches. And we knew we wanted the service to begin at the first point of contact, that front door. So what we, so we looked at service principles, next staff, please, and then we looked at the service pathway. Because once we have the service principles, we needed to say, alright, so how are people accessing services? I apologize, it's blurry, I can't seem to get this slide not blurry, no matter how I put it into the presentation because it's a snippet of what, what we had a consultant do for us. So we looked at the service pathway and we were looking at, when we developed the service pathway, we were talking about how do people access us for services? How do they request that service and how do we receive that service? Does it come to us electronically? Do they come in person to our office when we're open? Is it by phone? And how do we, the next step is how do we assess what they're coming to us for? A person may be coming to us saying, I didn't, I need, I need money, I need money to buy wood next month. I don't have any, I don't have any wood to heat my home. That's the request they're coming to us for, but we needed to assess, what is the need behind that request? Is it that they need wood for next month? Or is it that we need to support them in accessing an ongoing income support that they haven't accessed in order for them to buy wood every month, not just next month? So it's an assessment of those life stability needs they might have. Then it's an action plan that would be developed with the person. And an action plan, the intent of that would be to to make sure that it's, in order to support the person, we wanted them to have a plan in order for them to help themselves so that they might not need to come to us for that service request in the future. So that was part of the intent upon the action plan. We would issue benefits to support the person and then there's ongoing, there's ongoing service provision. So what else is needed? What do we, do I need to connect with this person in a few months? Do I need to connect them with other community resources? So we looked at it from the, from the perspective of the person being served. And one of the things we really identified was, and made changes to, was how many people that person might be accessing in order to receive services? So previously, we had, we had services aligned in that we, human services was where you went. If you wanted support with housing, childcare, you needed income support, financial assistance. However, once you got in there, you might be working with the person who delivered the childcare program or the person who delivered the housing benefits. So you, so as an individual, I'm now working with different people. The service pathway, what it did was it had a saying, no, the person needs to come in and ask for service. And whoever they come in to ask for that service needs to be the ones who know about all the other programs and services and to provide, and to provide those services to them. It doesn't matter the funding source or the, the funding pot that the services are coming from. What mattered was the service itself and could we better align those services and better use the funding from the different programs to provide the service for the, for the person? So the, so what we did was we combined two staff positions. We had a community housing support worker and we had caseworkers. We created a new position called the client services worker. And the expectation is that client services worker will be the person to receive the request, to do the assessment of the life stability needs, to create the action plan, to access the funding from, from identified supports. It doesn't matter what the program is, if the house, if the person needs housing supports, these are the list of housing supports that we have available. If they need supports for children's services and childcare, these are the list of supports. So it's done more on the supports and services as opposed to the program that's supports those or provides the funding to those supports and services. And they're responsible for doing that ongoing service provision and the ongoing check-in with the person and making sure that the action plan is, is working and what to do if it's, it's not working. So that's how we, that's how we changed it. Instead of having the person come in and meet with a number of different staff member who are all experts in their different areas, we have the person coming in, meeting with a staff member who may not be the expert in everything, but they are the ones to connect and to make those connections with the staff in our office who are the experts in those different programs and services. Next slide, please. So we also had to define what does life stabilization look like for the people we serve? Like what, why, why do they come to us? What could they possibly come to us for? How could, how can we possibly support life stabilization? What are all the different components of life stabilization? So this is what we developed. We know that there are other determinants of health, but life stability does make up 50% of life stabilization in general. And it could include all of those different areas, income, housing, social inclusion, education, disability. And the reason why this is so important, because this helps, helped form, how are we issuing benefits and what are we issuing benefits for to support the people we serve? It provided some direction for staff in that understanding that safe and nutritious food and security is important, as is community belonging, as is indigenous identity. So it's, what happens is it's, it's connecting people to different community resources and supports and referrals that might be related to that employment, it might be related to employment, it might be related to education, it might be related to social inclusion. So life stabilization is about many things. And our life stabilization questionnaire and assessment process helps staff identify all of these things. So these are some of the changes we also implemented. Next slide, please. So then we also really did a lot of work on our action plan and life stabilization benefits. We had to determine, provide clear direction for staff, for staff on what our life stabilization benefits would do and what they would be used for. So we have a goal of gaining self-sufficiency. And that can start off as self-sufficiency in terms of being able to find housing. It could be securing an ongoing source of income, but it also could be in connecting them to the community. It could also be supporting them in getting in employment, getting them connected to our local Employment Ontario offices. But the goals are, the life stabilization benefits has to be tied to a goal that addresses a barrier for that person so that that will help them move forward. It is, life stabilization benefits are not issued to support ongoing cost. Life stabilization benefits are not about replacing or supplementing a source of income that's not sufficient. It's not about duplicating funding in other areas. For example, if you're in receipt of Ontario Works, you receive funding to support your basic needs, housing, food. And whether or not that funding is sufficient, that's not going to be addressed under life stabilization benefits. However, we might help them connect to the community, we might help them with their education, which then might help them address their ongoing income if they get a job or if something else happens for them. Although we will help address emergent issues and emergency issues that people might be facing. So we are, so this is a change into what we have been doing. So we are supporting people in looking at what they need to do in order to help them move forward and gain life, life stabilization and focusing primarily on that. And that's a difference, that's a difference from what we're doing in the past. But one of the biggest changes with life stabilization and what we're doing and how we're providing services is that the Ontario Works program has over 800 rules and rules that have to be followed. We were very much a rules-based, compliance-based program. The ministry is changing that to the rules-based, compliance-based is going to be with the province. We are going to be more about offering the support and the services to help move people forward. In order to do that better, we're, we also looked at how people will access our services and how we, how we will connect with them. So we do have the ability for people to connect with us online. We can do it, we can, staff have the ability to connect via Zoom. We have the ability for them to connect in the community. We will have the ability for them to connect in our office. Of course, this is once, this is outside of COVID, this is the overall direction, but that's the intent. But the people we serve, when they, when they call us for a request for service, that their service request will be responded to within a one-half day, depending on the nature of the request. Urgent issues will be one-half day, other issues will be, the expectation is they will be responded to within one day so that we can improve, we can improve services. We currently provide services to non-disabled adults in receipt of ODSP, we've expanded those programs. Non-disabled adults in receipt of on, of ODSP, we've expanded those programs, supports and services to hopefully help. Move them forward with life stabilization as well. I. Um, that's the end of the presentation. I don't know, I don't know if you have any questions or if that made sense at all. I'm not too sure.
Um, my question would be, and I'm not sure if this is a fair question, but. Do you think that the province's direction to, you know, to change the direction on how things are done? Is helping or hindering and is it costing more or less?
It's, it's, it's not costing anymore. It's not costing any more money, however, it is, it is changing how we do things. Because during the transition year. It's been very difficult and service was definitely in impacted. How we delivered services, how long it took us to respond to the request of clients. It also made a difference because people would be applying to the centralized benefit unit with the province. And after. Uh, the province had issues with capacity and some people had not been responded to within. The timeframe of four days and in fact, it was two weeks. And the province would reach out to us to say, we need some help, we, we need help with the capacity, we can't handle the number of applications we're receiving. We need you to help us. Can you please do ten applications? What was all, what would also happen would be people, a person would have applied, but the province hadn't heard from them in ten days, then they'd be calling us. And understandably so. They would be very upset. They're obviously um. They're obviously applying for assistance, so they need support and it's been ten days and they hadn't heard from the province. The province did um. Address, has been addressing that and continues to address that. The change in the federal but benefits when. When the Canada response benefit and the Canada response benefit ended. The number of applications obviously increased significantly and that really made a difference for the pro- on the province's capacity to respond to all the applications. So we've been working together to try and, to try and make it work as best we can. There was also some initial confusion in service because people didn't know. They didn't know where to go, they didn't, they didn't know who to connect with. So if they connected with us, we provided that service. Um, for them and, and um, completed the applications. Although we are directing people, if you, if you phone our offices now. You do get direct, it, to apply for assistance, you will get connected directly with the province. You won't have to make another call. We do that automatically for you, but that's who you will connect with. It also makes a difference too. Because the people know our staff. The communities know us. And so that makes a difference as well, because when you phone the province, you're getting a call center. So the next time you phone the province, you're not going to get the same. Person likely to connect with you. So until they do connect with us. Um, it can be, it can be a little bit more confusing for them. Once they connect with us. Then it's the same as it always has been and we. And they have the one person that they will connect with and that does work better for them.
So with the centralized intake. Um, and, and the goal for the province to deal with eighty percent and, and um. And, and you guys to deal with twenty percent. That doesn't seem to be working. How, how is it just a, a matter of? We're overloaded with, with applications, so can you deal with it? For now, that's, that's how that's determined?
It's a number of things, actually. It is the capacity, that's the, I would say that's the major one. It's also about um, determining. What, what application is suitable for the province to complete? Um, I think the province initially had an expectation that pretty much eighty percent of people are very simple and straightforward and the application will be. Quite easy to do. People are not simple and straightforward and. Um, it's much more complex with that and I don't think they were quite prepared with that. They are, they have been continually working on staff. On, with their staff and doing training with their staff and actually they're using municipalities as consultants to do that. Um, so that they will be able to process more of those applications. Initially, they thought that twenty percent that we would be doing would be primarily people who need a trustee. Cause they have to have another person present with them. To complete that application or trust, people who need a trustee could be people who are under eighteen, it could also be people who have. Um, exceptional needs that need someone um, to support them. Or some of the more complex ones, like someone's in receipt of, of employment insurance and, and. Or they, they're in another benefit unit and it's just a little bit more com- com- complex like that. Um, but tho- those are the main, main reasons why.
Um, are there other questions of Janine? Uh, Council Roberts.
Thank you. No, there was a, a very thorough uh, explanation. It wasn't too long at all. It's, it's interesting and I, I guess change is always hard. Anytime you do that and that was good questions, Warden, that had been on my mind. But as well, when you can say about the province. It are, like, can you just explain? How Fleming College is a service provider, like is that when you see the province, they're going through Fleming College because that's who the province hired? Or, or anyway, I'll leave it to you to explain.
Uh, so Fleming College is for employment services. So what the province did, the province is going to do the financial management for, but for social assistance. Employment services are now going to be through. Um, Fleming College. Employment services were once a part of social, social assistance and now they're not, they're separate, they're being delivered by. Fleming College as a services to manager and the funding was taken away. The funding that was removed from us was transferred to. Most of it was transferred to um, let the services to manager to provide those employment services. However, it does once again create. It did, it, it did create additional. Issues and concerns for the people who we serve. Um, for a number of reasons. First of all, the people in receipt of those social systems were so used to getting those services and supports from us directly. And um. I will say that we provide excellent service and needs would be met quite quickly. It was a very quick turnaround. If they were eligible for a benefit or support, it was issued and we can issue payments overnight. Um, the province hadn't quite been prepared for our services to managers not being ready to do that. So we could have a person. Contacting us who's in receipt of Ontario Works saying, I need work boots for tomorrow, I've got a job. We'd be like, great, here you go, here's your work boots, here's your safety gear, off you go. That process isn't there and for all. Employment Ontario, they don't have, they didn't have the same infrastructure set up. In order to, I mean, first of all, they didn't, they didn't have a system like ours that issues payments directly. And can issue them right into a person's bank account or through a reloadable payment card. So it's not um. It's not on the performance of the service providers, it was on the infrastructure that was in place before. This change happened, um, but that really made a difference to the people that we serve. And there's also um. It's, it, it's taken a lot more work and time to coordinate. The benefits and services between the services to manager and us. Now that they're issuing benefits, they get to determine. What benefits and supports are issued according to their guidelines. Which, and we don't have any ability to. To say what they can do, right? We try to work together to coordinate that. So that did make a change as well for the people we serve where we have, might have been, we may have been providing. A specific benefit and support in order to help them get a job and they might not be. Like we would have provided, especially in some of our rural, rural communities. We would have provided them funds to have a phone. And, or internet access and that's changed except funding is now over with. The employment Ontario.
So the eight hundred and twenty-four thousand dollar reduction in funding to you. Is, is directly related to employment services or is it partially to do with centralized intake?
It was, it was strictly with the employment services. It was taken over out of that stream.
Other questions? Well, hearing none, thank you very much for that fulsome explanation, Janine. I, I don't envy you your job. It's really complicated. Uh, but we appreciate your time and the information.
Well, thank you very much for the opportunity to come and see all of you and present the information. Have a great day.
And you. Uh, could I have a mover and a second or two uh, to receive Janine's report? Uh, Councilors Roberts and Kennedy.
Moved by Councilor Roberts, seconded by Councilor Kennedy. Be it resolved that Halliburton County Committee of the Whole receives for information the Human Services update from Janine Mitchell. Manager of Human Services.
All in favor? That's carried. Uh, next is the adoption of minutes from our last committee of the whole meeting. Could I have a mover and a second or to adopt the minutes of? December the eighth. Councilors Burton and Shell.
Moved by Councilor Burton, seconded by Councilor Shell. Be it resolved that the minutes from the December eighth, two thousand twenty-one meeting. Of Halliburton County Committee of the Whole be adopted and circulated.
All in favor? It's carried. Uh, no correspondence to review. So next up is Rhodes. And we'll hear a status report from Robert. Morning, Robert.
Good morning, committee. Happy New Year and with our monthly standard status report, I guess I could just highlight for the committee's benefit. That staff and consultants are finalizing our two thousand twenty-two capital projects are, and we're in a good shape. Uh, to be able to tender those once uh, council approves budget. Uh, on our road maintenance side, uh, the sheet is just showing highlighting our kind of initial. Guesstimate of what work we're planning to do this year uh, for maintenance with ditching and, and whatnot. So. Uh, again, just initial status update and open to any questions that council may have.
Are there any questions on the status report? Well, that was easy. Thanks very much, Rob. Uh, could I have a mover in a second or then to, to receive the status report? Counselor DeBoland and seconded by Counselor Moffett. Thank you.
Moved by Counselor DeBoland, seconded by Counselor Moffett. Be it resolved that the January two thousand twenty-two status reports on capital projects, operations and road maintenance. Be received for information by Halliburton County Committee of the Whole.
All in favor? That's carried. Uh, nothing under EMS. Um, I would just comment that the uh. E O C has been meeting or met several times this year. Uh, to, to just look at the changes in. In this new variant and what might be required and, you know, I'm sure you're all aware that, that staff who can work at home are working at home and. And we're back to uh. Two more stringent practices, um, other than that, we're just meet to monitor the situation. So move on to finance. Um, starting with check registers, checking payroll registers. Morning, Andrea.
Good morning. Uh, our first report is the check register. Our December check register totaled five million thirty-three thousand nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fifteen cents.
Are there any questions on the check register? Could I have a mover and a second or to receive it, please? Counselor Shell and Moffett.
Moved by Counselor Shell, seconded by Counselor Moffett. Be it resolved that Halliburton County Committee of the Whole receives for information the staff report of a check register. For December two thousand twenty-one. And further that it be recommended to Halliburton County Council that the check register for December two thousand twenty-one with checks. E F Ts and P A Ps totaling five million thirty-three thousand nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fifteen cents be hereby approved.
All in favor? That's carried. Next is the payroll register.
Uh, we had two pay periods in December with net direct deposits totaling four hundred and fifty-seven thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars and ninety-five cents.
Any questions? Could I have a mover and a second or please? Counselors Kennedy and Shell.
Moved by Counselor Kennedy, seconded by Counselor Shell. Be it resolved that Halliburton County Committee of the Whole receives for information the staff report. On the payroll register for December two thousand twenty-one. And further that it be recommended to Halliburton County Council that the payroll register for December two thousand twenty-one with net direct deposits totaling. Four hundred and fifty-seven thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars and ninety-five cents be hereby approved.
All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Uh, okay, so next is the preliminary year-to-date actuals.
Uh, yes, so these are preliminary year-end numbers as of December thirty-first. Currently ninety-four point four percent of operating expenses have been incurred and eighty-four point nine six percent of capital expenses have been incurred. We are anticipating uh, to be under budget for two thousand twenty-one and as we get closer to finalizing. Those year-end numbers, I will be bringing a report back to you with further recommendations on that.
Any questions on that? Could I have a mover and a second or to receive the year-to-date actuals? Counselor Moffett and Kennedy.
Moved by Counselor Moffett, seconded by Counselor Kennedy. Be it resolved that Halliburton County Committee of the Whole receives for information the staff report. On the preliminary year-to-date actuals as at December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one. And further that it be recommended to Halliburton County Council that the preliminary year-to-date actuals as at December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one be hereby approved.
All in favor? That's carried. Okay, finally, under finance, we've got the budget update and a final budget approval request.
Uh, yes, so draft two was presented to you uh, December Committee of the Whole with a total levy of twenty million eight hundred and twenty-five thousand seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars. Which was a three point two one percent tax rate increase. Um, draft three provided to you today has a few uh, updates to it. We did receive an update from the library board with regards to the addition of their website. But it is to be fully funded by Safe Start Funding, so that is, does net zero. Uh, we did also receive notification of an increase in funding from OCIF, formula-based uh, funding. So we have utilized that increase um, to include a potential, a potential cost for a traffic light project on County Road twenty-one. Uh, that project would be fully described in a report to council uh, in the future. It also includes uh, the final social services and housing budget was, uh, which had a decrease of just under twelve thousand dollars. And we did also add twenty-five hundred for website licensing. There was no change in the final assessment numbers that were presented uh, or that were included in the December uh, draft. And uh, so with those changes. That brings the levy to twenty million eight hundred and sixteen thousand two hundred and seventy-one dollars. Which equals a three point one seven percent tax rate increase. That said, um, since submitting my report, I have received documentation from our insurance company regarding our two thousand twenty-two. Uh, renewal, which happens February first. Uh, currently, we have included a fifteen percent increase in insurance premiums. Uh, after receiving the documentation that I have, I don't feel that that's going to be enough, unfortunately. Um, I have not received the final number because we are still working on finalizing one piece of the uh, renewal. Which I can provide that update on what that is to council in closed session, if you'd like. So I would like to recommend um. An additional fifteen thousand dollars be added uh, for insurance costs uh, to what was presented to you today. So that would bring the total levy to twenty million eight hundred and thirty-one thousand two hundred and seventy-one dollars. The tax rate increase of three point two four percent.
I'm not sure if you would have heard from the library board at all, but uh, it would appear that you maybe um. They may be reducing the budget by fifteen thousand dollars. So uh, it's kind of a nice crossover that, you know, that those two things would happen at the same time.
Yeah, well, that would work out, work out well. So hopefully um, we can bring that final number to council and uh. Hopefully adopt the budget at that time.
Counselor Roberts.
Thank you. Um, so in light of also the, knowing that the December revenue expense is uh, preliminary at this point. And not knowing where the anticipated um. Portions that are underspent, are they in projects that should be carried forward or are they in other areas? We did have. Quite a staff changeover at the director's level. So, you know, sometimes in, in my mind, savings in that area. They don't necessarily need to be carried over. So. I would like to see a sort of more fulsome report of where we're at, and I know we can't make that decision right now, but if there are opportunities. Uh, for savings from the two thousand twenty-one budget. Like I said, generally, you know, we get this big long report and, you know, this amount goes to this reserve, this amount goes to this reserve, but why would you put savings from staff in the reserve? So um. I know it was a difficult year, but I, I, I would like to see. Uh, if there's an opportunity to even bring the levy lower than what it is, if there are savings in that regard. I don't know what other counselors feel.
Comments, other comments or questions? Well, I agree that that would be good information for us to have to see how how that funding could be allocated.
Okay, I can bring.
Go ahead.
I can bring that detailed savings from staff. If you'd like to counsel, so you have a better idea of what savings is involved in that.
Counselor Moffett, you have a question?
Yeah, I was just gonna say that I don't think there's any rush. And I think if we can just continue to cross some Ts and dot some Is, then I think we have a little bit of time to to make sure that those things are done. It's fine by me.
So could I have a mover in a second or to receive the budget update? Counselor Devlin and Counselor Ryle.
Move by Counselor Devlin, seconded by Counselor Ryle. Be resolved that the Halliburton County Committee of the Whole receives the January 12th, 2022, 2022 budget update and final approval request staff report. And further, that it be recommended to Halliburton County Council that the amendments outlined in this report be incorporated into the 2022 operating and capital budgets.
All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. And thanks for all your work on this, Andrea.
Thank you.
You and all the department heads. Next up is IT status report. Good morning, Mr. March.
Morning, Warren Danielson, and happy New Year to everyone. So this is basically the monthly status report going over the operations of the IT department. Not too too much to bring to to the council's attention. Maybe just a quick note we made, or some of the projects on the list, maybe you may see the status change delay in the coming months as we struggle with some staffing issues. Other than that, I don't think there's too much to to bring forward. So happy to answer any any questions about anything out there.
Are there any questions? Counselor Devlin.
Not a question, but a comment. I had the support from the ID part IT department lately. The transition to two-point authentication and I run across multiple platforms and had very timely service from the department to help me do that transition with all my devices. And I appreciate the support we get.
Thank you. You took the words right out of my mouth. I was just about to say thank you to Mike and and your department overall for the help. I, you know, the transition was not easy for everyone and and your assistance was much appreciated with with considerable amount of patience, I might add. So could I have a mover in a second or to receive the IT status report? Counselor Moffett and seconded by Counselor Kennedy. Thank you.
Move by Counselor Moffett, seconded by Counselor Kennedy. Be resolved that Halliburton County Committee of the Whole receives for information the January 12th, 2022 IT Department Status Report.
All in favor? That's Carrie. Nothing under planning and environment today. Think we'll have our a fulsome experience for planning on the 17th. Nothing under personnel for now. So next up is tourism. Good morning, Scott.
Good morning, Warden, committee, and happy New Year.
I think maybe we should change the title to Tourism and Economic Development or Economic Development and Tourism. But then we'd have to get into the procedural bylaw and, you know.
Us people in tourism and economic development, we we on the edge of our seat when it comes to procedural bylaws, I can tell you that. So.
So first up for you is High Caliburn.
Yeah, we just wanted to bring this report forward after some consultation with the team and the C A O. We decided, kind of given the the current circumstances and some of the unknown surrounding, the lockdowns and the optics of kind of marketing a festival, we made the recommendation to council that we cancel the event for the winter this year. I think we've identified that it's probably it's impacted registration as well as our ability to organize the event as a whole. And our team with the recent announcement of the Reconnect Ontario Grant will be evaluating that as well and perhaps looking to apply to that to look at a bigger and better event in 2023.
Are there any questions on this recommendation? Sadly, it seems to be a bit of a no-brainer. Hate to have to make this kind of decision, but it's definitely in in order. Could I have a mover in a second or? Counselor Robertson, Devlin.
Move by Counselor Roberts, seconded by Counselor Devlin. Be resolved that Halliburton County Committee of the Whole receives for information the report on High Caliburn Winter Edition 2022 and direct staff to cancel the event as a result of COVID-19 protocols and regulations.
All in favor? That's carried. Okay, now you're going to talk to us about creating an economic development strategy.
Thank you, Warden. So just a quick summary and and some of the meetings I had with the committee council before Christmas. I had chatted about this was one of the first things that the department would start looking at. So we prepared this report to give you a summary, basically of the purposes why we would go down this road. And then more importantly, give you a very good idea of what we'd be looking at for a scope of work if we're directed to go out for RFP. And most importantly, what the deliverables on the RFP would be to ensure that this isn't a document that just shit sits on the shelf. And it's actionable and it's implementable.
You've all seen the report. Are there any questions or comments that you'd like to make about it? Counselor Devlin?
Just a comment. I'm ecstatic, can't happen soon enough and look forward to what you and your team and the members of the community do in the years going forward on this front. So thank you, Scott.
Counselor Moffett and then Counselor Ryle.
Thank you. Yeah, I don't want to lose track of the Destination Management Plan, and I don't think that's Scott's plan. I think we need to sort of refocus the work that's been done there and fold it in. I just want to make sure that because of the money spent and the amount of work done in the community consultation that we that we just keep an eye on it and and keep it connected. The Destination Management Plan is intended to be a community plan as well as a tourism plan. I think ours was more focused on tourism, but the overall intent of them is is meant to be a community plan. So hopefully, there's some nuggets we can pull out of there as we develop a new, bigger, bigger plan. So look forward to it. Thanks.
Counselor Ryle.
Yeah, I can't echo any more than what Counselor Devlin has said is, I mean, this is an awesome opportunity here. I think the way you're going at it is excellent. I just have one question, Scott. We talked about this when you when you were with David, myself, and that's in relation to skilled enhancement in across the area. We found that when we started to investigate, a lot of the businesses that we had during both of the R and Es that were in 11 and 17 and along with the reallocation of of what people are doing under COVID, not to mention the explosion of construction that's going on in Halliburton County as we speak, we're finding we just don't have enough skilled people, specifically skilled for issues to be dealt with. Are we looking at or is in in other parts, are there line items within this strategy? A way to start working with the the skilled providers, be it the colleges or be it the apprentice board or whoever, to 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 let us with also a high unemployment rate in in Halliburton County, put some of our people back to work for businesses that are currently growing and and thriving in in Halliburton County? I just didn't see that in the report as a line item.
Through your warden and this probably all I can comment to just on Counselor Moffett's comments and probably the same time. So I think the scope of work there is fairly broad. And if that's a priority, we can definitely drill down and include that in there. I think it's important to to note that, you know, by no means is is the department not going to be moving forward with initiatives. Just we're going to wait on this. So it'll be a little challenging from a resource standpoint, trying to kind of tackle this project and then as well moving forward with initiatives that we know are are issues that are problems and what you've identified as one of them. So it'll be kind of continually, both myself and Tracy, as we move into our roles, reaching out to those organizations and seeing how we can move that needle ahead without waiting on the completion of a document. Because I'm pretty sure that document is going to tell us that we need to look at what you've identified. And ideally, it's just going to give us some implementable tactics to do that. And then further to Counselor Moffett's standpoint, or not standpoint, comment. Tracy, right now, just going through the Destination Management Plan and and hopefully, if if the stars align for us either in February or March, we'll be coming back with kind of an ops plan on how we plan to implement certain objectives within that document. And then that'll be used as, again, kind of a guiding document that can work along with the strategy. I'm hoping that answered your question, Counselor Ryle. If not, feel free to ask me to clarify a little bit more.
I just wonder if we do need to tighten up the, you know, the wording of the RFP to include, you know, what Counselor Ryle is talking about. Sometimes when when the direction is is too broad, it doesn't get done. Because a consultant will say, well, that's not included in the specifics of of our contract. So I'm not sure what council thinks about that. Any thoughts? Counselor Ryle, did you have your hand up again?
Yeah, I was just saying, look, the information that we're getting, and this is older information, was that back in the two B R and Es, there was the growth potential for having skilled labor available to them and only skilled labor addition was anywhere from 15 to 20% increase in sales. And and it didn't just restrict itself to construction. It was anybody that required anybody that needed a specific skill set. So it was diverse, you know. And and I think that 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 is going to be something that we need to deal with. And like I say, I I'd like to see, if if not directly mentioned, at least a little bit higher profile, that we need those skill sets. And we need to find out where are we? What's the inventory? Do we have enough of everything or are we short specific issues rather than everything in general?
Scott and then Counselor Moffett.
Through you, Warden. I'm happy to do that and tweak that scope of work and include that. That's not a huge issue for us and we can emphasize that. And then when we're we're just about to launch, probably in the next two weeks, our our business survey, which we hope will become an annual event. And we can put some questions in there as well regarding skilled labor and provide a little bit more information there for us to start developing some programs.
Counselor Moffett?
Thank you. Scott just answered my question, so I'm good.
Counselor Devlin, did I see your hand up? Counselor Roberts?
Thanks. How does housing equate into something like this? Because to me, that's one of the biggest obstacles, or does it just sort of possibly get identified through the surveys, through the stakeholder group meetings that there may, we may be able to attract skilled people? We have clearly, we're growing. And so what I continually hear from is that, but then people can't move here because there is no place to live. So I just didn't know how does housing tie into to an economic development strategy?
Through you, Warden. It'll be important, kind of through the project management standpoint, my philosophy with this is I don't want a document that says we need to expand broadband or we need more housing. I want a document that has tactics or objectives that utilize what tools are at the county's skill set or the township's skill set, so to speak, in our toolbox that we can actually make a difference on. So housing for sure will be identified in this document. We'll be pressing the consultant that whatever they produce related to that is actually something that the county can impact and make a difference on, not just we need more housing. It's if we need more housing, what what actions can we take and what what tools are in our toolbox to actually make a difference and and make a measurable impact?
Counselor Moffett and then Counselor Devlin.
Yeah, to Scott's point you just made, I think that's a really valuable piece of it. And I wonder what happens if or slash when we we come across something that is beyond our our current toolbox? Hopefully, there'd be something built in that would that would allow for us to, as community, go go and get or somehow acquire something that we're missing to move us to the next level to feed the growing needs as opposed to saying, well, we don't have those skills. So or skill sets or toolbox, so we won't, we can't go there. So sort of looking for the bigger, the biggest blue sky possible of here are our problems and here's how we're going to have to build back to get there. So hopefully, that would be part of it as well as is saying, well, we don't have this, so we have to go and get it.
If I may, through you, Warden, for sure, I obviously, we're not going to limit this. We want some some big picture ideas. It'll just be important that when we're looking at the document, it's just identified how we can progress with that. I know particularly in tourism and economic development, we try to say no is not is not our first response. It's we have to look at it and see what's out there and what other tools we have or initiatives that we can adopt or or look at. So by no means are we going to limit it. It's just those those bigger picture, broad spectrum concepts. We just want some direction from that consultant about how you could go about dealing with that and what partners or options are out there that you could reach out to.
Counselor Devlin.
Yeah, a great point of what we can and can't do. But I would say in the advocacy side, building on the ideas that Counselor Moffett said there, colleges and universities are in in more so colleges in our instance are a part of the puzzle. And those things are identified that we go to them directly, whether it's through staff or whether we do delegations of AMOR or Roma, or whether we need to be a participant in creating a home so that some educational group like a college, whatever, could do some of the specific training that we need in our area. And certainly, the building and hospitality industries, we don't have any real at-home place for those to happen in Halliburton County. And those are the kind of things that I think we may need to lean on lean on those institutions or the provincial government in the years to come that that we indeed need them here within within our county. Because we all know that how how large the need is.
Counselor Moffett, did you have another comment or thought?
Just, yeah, along, excuse me, along the same lines of sort of that that big picture thing. And in our interviews, we had talked about this with Scott and I I say it semi-facetiously. And it circles back to Counselor Ryle's point about the trades is, you know, we talked about different expenditures here and there and at the county table before Scott joined us in his role. We were talking about using certain monies for sort of content creation. And and I know I said, and I think some people have agreed that, you know, tourism is pretty tight and tourism is 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 pretty well covered. You can't find accommodation anywhere. And that not right now with COVID, but things have been have been very busy and full and that perhaps we should be looking at other things. And so my my facetious, not so facetious comment is not, again, not dissimilar to what Counselor Devlin has just said, as well as maybe what we need is is a bus that takes young people to trade school in Peterborough. And I, again, I say that sort of semi-facetiously, but that's what I mean by looking at if we can't get the colleges to come to us, is there a way that we can get people to the colleges? And I think those are the kinds of strategies we need to be looking at. I don't know if they're realistic, if they're if they're achievable, but that's what I mean about thinking outside of of that of what we currently have and have to offer here. And I absolutely believe that Scott knows well exactly what he's doing and will bring us something really good we can get our teeth into. So thank you.
Counselor Ryle.
Yeah, I'm sure we're not going to try to solve that problem today, but some of the issues that came up and we looked in at the time when we were looking at the shortage of skilled labor was that the bricks and mortar for the actual building is really not an issue because we have enough municipal buildings that could be used for train. that could be used for training if we needed it. And we have enough sponsorship from, from, from businesses that are looking for that skilled labor to get equipment and stuff that could be done. Our problem was to get the qualified instructors and licensed by the province. Or in other words, recognized by the province so that the skills that they're imparting on the people that are, that are there are valued. And this, this came up when we dealt with the apprentice board and a few other pieces like that. So you, you've got a problem of we don't need the buildings. And the other problem, and I appreciate and clearly understand what Counselor Moffett is saying, is many of our companies cannot afford to take people and send them to Peterborough for two or three days to get trained. And the question came, why not? Just because that's where the facilities are. The facilities came here and the qualified instructors moved with them. Then that might solve the problem. I'm not saying that's the answer. I'm merely saying it's an alternative that could be looked at.
Just a couple of specifics under, you know, what's included in the, in the consultation. I'm wondering if we should mention the need to meet with county council as well as the steering committee? Because I would see that there might be at least two opportunities to do that, one in the beginning and, and one when they're completed the project. And, and your thoughts, Scott, on 25 one-on-one interviews? Is that enough?
If I may, Warden, I guess your first point, I left the meeting schedule just in the scope of work, just so that we didn't kind of go down that rabbit hole about the, the project management. I'll bring that back when we actually make a recommendation on who we're going to select about how the project will be managed in a steering committee. I generally approach it that the consultant would meet with county council or committee right at the start. Ideally at about 33% away, percent of the way through the project after kind of we've collected data to give you, give county council an idea on direction and then at about, we'll say 66 to use around numbers to give a preliminary document and then ultimately the final document. So lots of opportunity for county council to provide input and make sure that what we're delivering is to your standard. As far as 25 individual meetings, I can, I can change that. That's, you know, if we think it's 40 or you have a recommendation or suggestion that it should be more than that, I'm happy to include that. That, that really is not a, not a huge issue to me. If we want to make it 40, we want to make it 50. It's, it just comes down to, thankfully with Zoom, a lot of that can be done electronically now. It just more comes down to kind of timeframe that just runs the project out a bit more. But we want to do it once and we want to do it right.
I just know that when we do consultations, quite often there, there's people that, you know, from the sidelines say, well, you didn't talk to me. I don't know if council has any thoughts. You think that 25 one-on-one is sufficient or maybe it's, it's being too picky. Counselor Roberts?
It does say in it that it's a minimum of 25. I think that's quite a good sample. And I think once the consultants present the, you know, the different consultants bid on this and show this is what we'd like to do. You know, what if it could be 27? I think a hard number is you don't need to put, I think by just putting a minimum of 25 would be a really good sampling. So I'm fine with that, that section myself.
Any other questions or comments on the report? Okay, could I have a mover and a seconder to receive it? Counselor Moffett and Kennedy.
Moved by Counselor Moffett, seconded by Counselor Kennedy. Be it resolved that Halliburton County Committee of the whole received the January 12th, 2022 report on the creation of an economic development strategy. And that it be recommended to Halliburton County Council that staff be directed to issue an RFP for the creation of a countywide economic development strategy.
All in favor? That's Carrie. Exciting stuff. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
I don't see anything under general items of business. Is there anything that we need to cover under municipal collaboration?
Not that I'm aware of, Warden.
Okay. We will then move into our closed session and council might want to take maybe a 15-minute break. Does that sound reasonable? So we would start our closed session at 10:30. So Counselor Devlin?
Yeah, just like I was moving a motion that we go into close.
Okay, moved by Counselor Devlin, seconded by Counselor Shell.
Moved by Counselor Devlin, seconded by Counselor Shell. Be it resolved that Halliburton County Committee of the whole enter into closed session for the following reasons. Personal matters about an identifiable individual, including municipal or local board employees and labor relations or employee negotiations.
All in favor? That's Carrie. We'll see you at 10:30.
We're back live, Warden Danielson.
Thank you. No specific report from closed, so nothing left but to ask for a mover and a seconder for adjournment of our committee of the whole meeting. Counselors Kennedy and Ryle, thank you.
Moved by Counselor Kennedy, seconded by Counselor Ryle. Be it resolved that the January 12th, 2022 meeting of Halliburton County Committee of the whole now adjourned.
All in favor? That's Carrie. Thanks. See some of you this afternoon.
Thank you. Take care, everyone. Stay safe.